Welcome to News Hour from the BBC World Service. I'm Razia Iqbal. Myanmar's ousted civilian leader Aung San Suu Kyi is sentenced to two years in jail. Her supporters say the military have orchestrated the trial.
It's a show trial. This has nothing to do with a rule of law, but it has everything to do with prolonging of military junta ruling of terror against the people of Myanmar.
The WHO says malaria cases are surging as the pandemic disrupts prevention and treatment. Also, now that the new COVID-19 variant is being found in many places, are travel bans discriminating against countries...
All right, council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RV TV Channel 3 on Thursday at 7:00 PM and Saturday from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Let me ask you something on that, Madam Clerk. This reads Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00. Is that continuously?
No, it's not.
Or is it just 10 and 5?
And 5.
Okay.
We'll correct that, Mayor. Thank you.
And video stream through Facebook Live at facebook.com/ronocva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the hearing impaired. All right, items for action today. A communication from the mayor's office requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss vacancies on certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 Code of Virginia as amended. And you all have a list of current vacancies, which was included with the agenda for this meeting. So I need a motion for that closed meeting. Anybody?
Second.
Okay. Second. Okay. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Besfitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. Thank you. Are there any items listed on the 2:00 PM council docket requiring any discussion or clarification? And are there any additions or deletions to the 2:00 PM agenda? Or topics for discussion by the mayor and members of council? All right, briefings, we have none this morning. There will be a joint meeting of the Legislative Committee and area legislators to discuss the 2022 legislative program scheduled for 9:30 this morning in the council chamber. All right, so that's scheduled. So we have a period of time until we have that meeting. Is that right, Mr. Besfitch?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we are expecting the school board members of the committee to attend as well, and the superintendent of schools will be with us. And the former superintendent of Salem Schools, they hired as a government affairs liaison type role, he also plans to attend. So we need to give them time to arrive, and hopefully some of our legislators or somebody from their offices will be here.
Great. Thank you. Let me correct something that I may have said to some of you, and I think your school board buddies or yeah, buddies may have called you. I want to correct that not the governor-elect is visiting our city school, the governor, the current governor, Governor Northam, will be visiting Westside School this morning along with the Secretary of Education. So I want to make sure we're clear on that. I want to make sure you all corrected on that, and so they will be coming.
Do we know what time he plans to be there, Mr. Mayor?
Pardon me?
What time he plans to be?
The governor?
Yeah, at Westside.
I think 11, around 11 or 11:45. And given our agenda, we may, and I underline that word "may," because once we go into meetings, we never know, but we may be able, some of us may be able to be over there. We were invited to be a part of that if we so choose. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I can have a question. I just wanted to clarify that we are having a joint meeting January 3. Is that with the Ronald redevelopment housing? Is that when it is? I wasn't sure.
No, I think that's February, Mrs. Mayor.
Is it February? Okay, I just wanted to confirm.
Yeah, I was wondering. I was hoping it would be January.
Yeah, I was just trying to clarify.
Usually in January you have your organizational meeting. We tend not to have any briefings, Natasha, but we had already scheduled February with the Housing Authority anyway, so. And I think that's the first.
The organizational meetings usually come every two years.
And I think that's the first meeting in February, but I'll find out for sure.
Yeah, because at one time it was, the joint meeting was with the school board, and then it moved to February, but I don't know what the schedules are now.
But I'll verify it first or second.
Okay, please. Thank you. I just, I thought it was January, but thank you.
All right, well, I guess we will be in recess until the legislative meeting starts at 9:30. All right? Well, council will be in recess shortly for a short period of time, and we'll come back and prepare to have our legislative meeting with our area legislators. Let me just say that last week, and I appreciate Councilman Besfitch going with me to meet with the legislator that the regional legislative lunch put on by the regional chamber. I thought it was very informative, and it was good to see those earlier representatives who came and talked about the concerns and issues that we have. And so I thought it was a very good meeting, and I appreciate our legislative chair, Mr. Besfitch, being with us and sharing some of the thoughts and concerns we have. And probably we may see many of the legislators this morning at our meeting. So we look forward to that. So thank you. All right, we'll be in recess.
Mayor, just before you recess, I do want to make one correction. I spoke with Cece, and she is saying that the council meetings will be replayed on RV TV Saturdays from 10 to 5. It will be continuous. This is something new they're doing, so that's, I wanted to correct that or check that with her. Yes, it will be continuous from 10 to 5.
Okay.
Yes.
Shouldn't have a chance to catch it all, or we have a chance to look at it? Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
All right. We'll be in recess until our 9:30 meeting with the legislators.
All right, let's go on. Come out of recess and reconvene. And at this time, I am pleased to recognize the Chairman of our Legislative Committee, Councilman Bill Best-Bitch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank all of you for being with us. I'll just, for the record, I just asked the Secretary, Ms. Crook, to call the role of the Legislative Committee.
Mayor Lee?
Here.
Mr. Best-Bitch?
Here.
Ms. White-Boy?
Here.
Mr. Cobb?
Here.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez-Jones?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
And Dr. Jamison?
Here.
And I would also note that we have our Superintendent of Roanoke City Public Schools, along with some of her key staff members, with us this morning. And I want to especially thank Lily Franklin from Delegate Rasul's office and Patrick from Senator Edwards' office for representing them this morning. I know that unfortunately, a number of our legislators had conflicts with their schedule and would not be able to be here. So I'm really going to encourage all of us to reach out to them individually and just sort of let them know what we would like their help with and how, if they have any questions or need any more information, we can provide that. So let me go down through the list briefly and then ask Lily and Patrick to speak to us a little bit. This first one, we had this before and really sort of perplexed by this. You know, when somebody doesn't pay their stormwater utility fee, we can attach that as a lien on their property, but solid waste collection fees, we can't do that. And so it makes the billing very complicated for people. And the thing that I really want to stress about this is that most people pay. Most people pay on time. It's not a problem. First of all, it's not fair to them if other people don't pay, and there's no mechanism, really, to make sure that eventually that will get paid. And secondly, whatever's not paid puts pressure on us to have to increase the fee at some point in the future. If everybody pays, there's not as much of a need for us to increase. So I hope that the General Assembly will keep that in mind. I understand that Delegate Rasul has submitted this bill for drafting. I hope that means he's also going to introduce the bill, but I understand that there may not be any guarantee of that. The second one is to authorize localities to require retrofitting of buildings containing one or more dwelling units to install and maintain smoke alarms. There are already a number of different buildings in which this is required. We think it should be in residential. We're asking for it because, you know, as the city of Roanoke, we're asking to authorize localities. Personally, I really wish that this would be a statewide requirement. It would not be up to any area locality to require it, but it would be across the state. Both Senator Edwards and Delegate Rasul have submitted this bill for drafting. The third one is to adopt legislation to allow localities to limit smoking to designated areas. And we wanted to word it this way to make it clear that we're not saying you can just ban smoking altogether. What we're saying is, if people want to smoke, they can go to a designated area that's no more than 100 feet from a recreation center, outdoor playground, and sports field. You know, people have become increasingly concerned about secondhand smoke, and it really can have a detrimental effect. And again, we understand that both Senator Edwards and Delegate Rasul have submitted this one for drafting. Number four, in honor of my good friend and former colleague on City Council, the Honorable Bev Fitzpatrick, he's requesting that the Virginia Museum of Transportation become an official state agency. And I'm not sure whether Senator Edwards plans to introduce a bill to require this or just a budget amendment. The budget amendment would be great. It would be a step in the right direction, but it only applies to that budget. If it's written into the code, then it becomes a line item in the budget, you know, as we go forward. So I hope people will take that into consideration as well. Number five is something that originated here in Roanoke with the, Senator Sutilline has joined us. Thank you very much, Senator. Good to see you this morning. This originated with the doctor and I guess a group of other people here in Roanoke, Dr. Perkins, to provide a tax credit on state income tax equal to the purchase of an AED that would be placed in a new or used vehicle. AEDs have become quite common in many places, and this would probably save lives going Delegate Rasul had talked to me about a couple of things that we went ahead and included in here, number six and seven, funding for the support spinoff companies in the innovation corridor from the Regional Accelerator, the ramp, all the way to the Fraley Biomedical Research Institute. And then, secondly, Delegate Rasul indicated to me on number seven that he plans to introduce a study resolution to really look at a different approach, which I understand they did when they remodeled the mental health facility in Stanton, to have more of a campus-like feel to it and not just a big institutional building, but to have smaller group homes where people who need treatment, for whatever reason, can be in a smaller group. Number eight, adopt legislation to authorize a special commissioner to convey certain property directly to a land bank. You know, this is really important to cities across the Commonwealth. When we have blighted properties, when we have a property that somebody has abandoned and boarded up and just left it there, it doesn't just have an effect on that property. It has an impact on the whole street. Conversely, when a land bank can get a hold of some of these properties and rehab them or get a hold of a vacant lot and work with partners such as Habitat for Humanity to create a good house that fits into the neighborhood, that helps everybody else up and down the street. That helps the neighborhood. So I hope that you really keep that in mind and take a close look at that one. Number nine is adopting legislation to amend the Roanoke Charter so that the clerk of the Circuit Court is funded by the Compensation Board, and we think that that's what's going on in most of the other localities around Virginia. And so this is going to be pursued, this time as a budget amendment, and the charter change can be introduced later on. We had submitted that to the newspaper for publication of a public hearing, and we submitted two things, and instead of running both of them, they ran one of them twice and left this one out. So that's why it was not, we can't hold a public hearing on that. Number 10 is really just a housekeeping matter that reflects the change in the election date for Roanoke City Council members from May to November, and then the term starting in January and not in the 1st of July. And with that, I would ask Chair of our School Board, Ms. Lethuria Smith, if she would like to introduce a discussion of the education items.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We are excited to be able to share our education items with you all this morning. And to do that, I am going to yield the floor to Dr. Alan Seabert. Dr. Seabert joined Roanoke City Public Schools in the role of Constituent Services and Government Relations Officer on October 1 this year. And as many of you know, Dr. Seabert previously served as Superintendent of Salem City Schools, retiring after a 30-year career of service to Salem City Schools, and has come to what we think is the better school division. Not the better, just a great school division, giving him a hard time, and is working with us part-time in this role. And we are excited to have him. And just a little bit about the Office of Constituent Services and Government Relations. In that role, Dr. Seabert provides independent confidential resources for students, families, employees, and community members, offering informal help to resolve concerns, problems, complaints, and other student-related issues. And on the government relations side, Dr. Seabert works with the board, the administration with council is on this legislative committee, as well as the VSBA and others, to achieve the legislative goals of the school board and to promote positive leadership of the school division regarding education policy and financing. So I will turn it over to Dr. Seabert, who will share some information and then we can have discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Dr. Seabert, for being with us. It's good to see you in the city of Roanoke.
It is very good to be here, Chairman Best-Bitch. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, to the School Board Chair, Vice Chair, Mrs. White, City Manager, everybody, thank you very much. This is, I've been so warmly welcomed. I was looking for a second career where it'd be a good fit for my skills and experience. I was ready for a change, but not ready to stop serving. So it is a pleasure to be here with fellow colleagues who have also answered the call to serve the greater community, and I really do appreciate that. I also extend my appreciation to Ms. White and her whole team for the culture that's underway is beautiful, and to be welcomed into it has been a really wonderful thing. Obviously, the legislative efforts have been an area of interest for me for a number of years because it's profoundly important that we are engaged with our legislators and that we are advocating for what is good for children and families, and what's good for children and families is good for the city, and so we certainly welcome that opportunity. Part of what we want to do is build relationships, but we also want to anticipate the questions that are ahead and share those out there. So with that in mind, I'd like to share just the two summary informations that we provided to you this morning. And again, this has been prepared by the really exceptional team in the Division Office. But I first like to call your attention to the federal funding piece. We expect that both at the federal and state level, there's going to be a lot of interest in what are school districts doing with the resources that are being provided, significant federal resources that are coming in. And so we wanted to share proactively what that plan was, and you're already aware of it because it's how it fits into the capital improvement plan. But quickly, I want to share with you that a third of that money, 31% of those dollars, have gone toward health and safety. You can't reopen schools unless you keep children and staff safe. So the equipment upgrades, the PPE, all those types of things were obviously a very necessary investment. Teaching learning is the core business of a school division, and so a lot of children have suffered a lot of learning loss. Now, we want to be careful that people don't attribute that specifically to schools because learning loss did not just happen at schools. It happened when children didn't go to summer camp, when they didn't go to play with the cousins, when there's all kinds of parks and rec events. There's a whole lot of things that happen. But just like a runner who stops on the road and then waits to start running again, they've got some catching up to do. And so the plans here are to really invest in the staff and the support services, a massive summer program that happened this past summer, and the plans going forward this year to really help children learn. But as you all are aware, but many in the public may not be aware, these federal dollars, although significant, are limited in time. And so this creates a question, well, how do you leverage short-term dollars for long-term benefit? And that's where the school boards can collect connection and working with the City Council for capital improvement planning already set the stage for that. By using about 20% of the federal funds to help invest in the Equity and Action Plan, permitting the movements that will both create the new Rotex Center at Fleming, as well as the Community Empowerment Center, as well as the move of the Division Office, this is how to leverage these short-term dollars for generational benefit, changes that would double the career and technical capacity of the school district and bring about a whole bunch of other improvements. Again, trying to make sure that short-term money has an enduring impact. So that is a piece that we have already found has been of interest, and we wanted to make sure you were aware of that so we could share. Then the Communications Department has created this little grip card here, and the grip card has this cool little QR code that will take anyone interested to the documented positions, which of course you also already have. But on the back of that, you get the primary tenants of the key positions of the Roanoke City School Board. One, we want to advocate for local control. Our legislature convenes in Richmond, and they are well-intentioned, out to help the Commonwealth improve. But the Commonwealth is a wonderfully wide and diverse place, and what works in northern Virginia may not work in the Roanoke Valley, may not work in Hampton Roads. So we want to always be advocating, yeah, that's a good idea, but please consider the local context. And whenever possible, empower the City Council and the school board to figure out the how to get things done. A lot of it comes down to dollars. A whole bunch of the work of the General Assembly comes down to budget. And so a couple of key things about the budget. The support staff cap was implemented in 2009, and it created an arbitrary limit on the standards of quality funding that the state provides to school divisions for support staff. For example, the state currently only recognizes about 18% of instructional assistance in the Commonwealth of Virginia. That means they're only paying the state's share, which is a portion of 18% of instructional assistance, whereas the instructional assistants are hugely important. These are people with great big hearts who love children. They, at modest wages, have a huge impact, and they also help us support our teachers. We need to support our teachers with compensation, but also with people that help them be successful. So the support staff cap is an arbitrary limit on what the state funds, and it has a huge impact on the council and the school board. Because if the support staff cap is rolled back and the state begins paying its share of what's, there's been a local burden for the past 10 years, that then frees up local dollars to have additional impact elsewhere. Because again, City Council has been, localities everywhere have been paying the cost of that. It was intended to help get us out of the recession, but it has stayed there. And so we're advocating strongly that the support staff cap be rolled back. But that gets to the employee compensation. If, in fact, those local dollars are freed up and start by the state paying its share, now the City Council and the school board have the opportunity to help improve teacher compensation, which we know is extremely important, given the increasing shortages. And then lastly, the standards of learning assessments, hugely important, very useful tool, but a toolbox has to have many tools. It can't just be hammers and wrenches. You have to have more discreet tools. So we're advocating for some assessment reform. We're advocating that the current accountability system in Virginia is like a 1990s approach to a 1980s problem, and it's been tweaked and improved and changed, but we really need a balanced assessment system. We absolutely do need achievement measures to see which kids reach the bar, but we need better tools to help see where children are going. The school district brought online this year the Measures of Academic Progress Assessment, which is intended to do that. Rather than going to the doctor once a year and get a big old pint of blood drawn, you do some finger sticks along the way, see where the kids are and how they're doing. That is important, and that is helpful. But right now, there's just too much assessment because while the Division is taking on a superior assessment, the state is not recognizing that. So we'll be asking legislators to consider flexibility, again, local control, to help respect and honor the tools that Division has in place to measure the progress of its children. So that's a high-level summary of the topics that the school board is looking at, that they adopted at the November School Board meeting, and I'm certainly happy to answer questions or defer them to the remarkable team here.
Thank you very much, Dr. Seabert, for that presentation. I wanted to mention one other education issue. I read recently about a report that's coming out from a commission that's been looking at education issues throughout the year, I guess since the last General Assembly session. And one of the things that they're recommending is that school boards be allowed to retain a fund balance that can be used for capital needs. Well, whether school boards are elected, as they are in many localities, or whether they are appointed, as they are here in Roanoke and in Salem, they
They, at modest wages, have a huge impact, and they also help us support our teachers. We need to support our teachers with compensation, but also with people that help them be successful. So the support staff cap is an arbitrary limit on what the state funds, and it has a huge impact on the council and the school board. Because if the support staff cap is rolled back, and the state begins paying its share of what's, there's been a local burden for the past 10 years, that then frees up local dollars to have additional impact elsewhere. Because again, city council has been, localities everywhere have been paying the cost of that. It was intended to help get us out of the recession, but it has stayed there. And so we're advocating strongly that the support staff cap be rolled back. But that gets to the employee compensation. If in fact, those local dollars are freed up, and start by the state paying its share, now the city council and the school board have the opportunity to help improve teacher compensation, which we know is extremely important, given the increasing shortages. And then lastly, the standards of learning assessments, hugely important, very useful tool. But a toolbox has to have many tools. It can't just be hammers and wrenches. You have to have more discreet tools. So we're advocating for some assessment reform. We're advocating that the current accountability system in Virginia is like a 1990s approach to a 1980s problem. And it's been tweaked and improved and changed, but we really need a balanced assessment system. We absolutely do need achievement measures to see which kids reach the bar, but we need better tools to help see where children are going. The school district brought online this year the Measures of Academic Progress Assessment, which is intended to do that. Rather than going to the doctor once a year and get a big old pint of blood drawn, you do some finger sticks along the way, see where the kids are and how they're doing. That is important, that is helpful. But right now, there's just too much assessment, because while the division is taking on a superior assessment, the state is not recognizing that. So we'll be asking legislators to consider flexibility, again, local control, to help respect and honor the tools that division has in place to measure the progress of its children. So that's a high-level summary of the topics that the school board is looking at, that they adopted at the November school board meeting. And I'm certainly happy to answer questions or defer them to the remarkable team here.
Thank you very much, Dr. Seibert, for that presentation. I wanted to mention one other education issue. I read recently about a report that's coming out from a commission that's been looking at education issues throughout the year, I guess since the last General Assembly session. And one of the things that they're recommending is that school boards be allowed to retain a fund balance that can be used for capital needs. Well, whether school boards are elected, as they are in many localities, or whether they are appointed, as they are here in Roanoke and in Salem, they have no taxing authority. So what that means in most localities all over Virginia is that the school board comes to their governing body, Board of Supervisors or City Council, with a request for funds every year, put together a budget, and ask the governing body to please fund it. Then at the end of the year, any unspent money goes back to the local governing body. We don't do that in the city of Roanoke. We haven't done that for decades. We have a funding formula, currently it's at 40% of local taxes essentially, that come right off the top, go straight to the school board. And we've allowed them for many years to maintain a fund balance. And they have used that very wisely, very judiciously. They've been able to start things like the R C P S Plus program in the summer for kids and other things that they've been able to do over the years. So I hope that if this is introduced, and I really want to address this to Senator Suterline and our representatives from the other legislators, that don't limit it to capital needs only. We have not put that kind of limitation on it. They have used some of the money for capital needs, certainly. But they've also been able to use it in other ways as well. And the only thing we ask of them is to maintain a minimum balance that could only be used in extraordinary circumstances, when there's an emergency situation or whatever, that there's a great need, and they've done that. So I just hope that we can retain that flexibility for our school board and not put that restriction on them, because we've handled this very well between our city council and the school board for many years now, and I would just hate to see that happen. So thank you very much. The rest of our program consists of some policy statements that are really more designed to help our legislative liaison in Richmond, which is Advantage Strategies, to understand our concerns, our positions on various issues that may come up at some point during the General Assembly session. And I understand that Laura Bateman from Advantage is with us by Zoom this morning, and I'll ask her if she has any comments in a few minutes. But before we get to that, I want to start with our legislative and representatives, and I really appreciate Senator Suterline taking the time to be with us personally. And in honor of that, I would like to recognize him first for any comments that he might have for us at this point. And Senator, if you don't mind coming to the microphone, just so we can catch everything for the recording of the meeting, appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Mayor and council, or I guess chairman, for this specific part, since we're in committee meeting, but appreciate the chairman and mayor and council and the school board for the opportunity to be with you all today. It's great to be with my friend Alan Seibert here today in a different capacity. I've said it in several other venues, but I think he represents probably the greatest free agent signing anywhere around this year. It's just fantastic for the Valley that the Roanoke City Schools are going to benefit from him. He's joining a great team. Superintendent White is putting together, and I'm very excited about what's happening in Roanoke City Schools and what that means for the Valley, you know, not just next year, but 10 years, 20 years from now. I think a lot of very good things are happening in Roanoke City Schools with that leadership that's been installed there. Regarding some of the school policies, the support services cap, like Mr. Seibert said, that was installed in 2009. Governor Kane put that in during the budget discussion. Unfortunately, it was not taken off by Governor McDonnell or either Governor McAuliffe or Governor Northam. I think some of our school board folks got to hear me debate Sarah McClellan two years ago about the support services cap and, you know, what would likely happen if Republicans won or Democrats won in the 2019 elections. Unfortunately, I won the debate by saying I didn't think the Democrats were serious about it, because they won the election, and the support service cap is still there despite the trifecta. I'm hopeful that we're able to make progress on it. You heard Mr. Seibert specifically mention IAs, the instructive assistants, instruction assistants that are in the classrooms, that help students that are having a different experience than maybe most of their fellow students, but also is there to help all the students often. I think that is one of the best uses of tax dollars that we get. There's few things where our tax dollar goes as far in bringing services to our citizens as IAs, and I'm hoping that we're able to make progress on the support services cap there. You know, ideally, I would like to see things changed larger on that. I don't know. I don't know. Something on that that I'll just speak to in general, I'm trying to make sure everyone hears this. I'm hopeful Governor Northam, when he puts forward this budget that will not go into effect until five months after he, about five and a half months after he leaves office, that he will make a good, sound policy in there regarding support services cap. But something just to keep in mind is what happened when Governor Kane left office, the last time we had a party switch in the executive mansion. You had a executive budget introduced in the final days of administration that was not based in reality at all. It included several spending things, and to fund them included a massive tax increase that Governor Kane knew was not going to pass, and that there was no way the McDonnell administration would embrace that. So I'm hopeful that Governor Northam will put forward a realistic budget document. That's something that the Senate Democratic leadership, House Republican leadership, and Governor Lake Youngkin will be able to work from. But history has suggested that optimism may be misplaced, but I hope to be proven wrong on that. Regarding assessment reform, it's so critical that we have ways to make sure our students are receiving quality education across the Commonwealth. That's why we had the standards of learning put in in the 90s, as Mr. Seibert mentioned. It was probably the best approach at the time, but we've been making significant progress in other assessments that we can do, where we have a, we still have some standardized testing, but nowhere near to the extent that was envisioned in the early and mid 90s. We have taken off some of the standardized testing requirements, allowed alternative assessments in some places. I think we should continue down that road. I have legislation and drafting related to that. Regarding some of the things on here, it's a little disappointing to see the smoking situation on here again. In the past, I told you that I did not think that that was something that we should go down that path, and I was told it was going to be very narrowly tailored, and it was just, it was really all about Elmwood Park, and so that people wouldn't be smoking in the front of the amphitheater. I expressed reluctance to believe that at the time. That code, you were given the authority that was requested, and now I see that it is more than what I envisioned previously. And, you know, I obviously don't like that, because I disagree with the policy, but what's worse is when you do that, it makes it harder to advocate for positions coming from council when we're told one thing, and then you get it, and then you say, well, actually, we wanted what you said you didn't want previously. I see there's multiple things in here about taxes, trying to be able to place liens on folks for water bills, or for the water fees, rather. I'm not usually more enthusiastic about placing liens on property. Something that I think that you all should consider is the significant amount of funding that's coming in right now. It's record pretty much across the Commonwealth, and I have not evaluated every single city budget, but it's pretty good right now. And so seeing several policies all advocating about how to make sure greater capture, while not seeing anything about relief, is also a little concerning. Something that I'll be carrying this General Assembly is to allow for personal property tax relief, because we are in a very strange time in which auto values, car values, truck values are going up. I remember, you know, growing up, you would always try, we were always taught in high school, do not think of your car as something that will appreciate any value, because it will not. And so be careful with the choices you make in purchasing it. This is not an appreciating asset. Well, we now have people in the Roanoke Valley who are finding vehicles that actually are appreciating in value, and as a result, their tax assessment is going up, and they're actually having to pay more for their tax on their car than they did the year before. So this legislation will allow localities to provide rebates, which hopefully, we don't continue in this strange car market. I don't know anyone that really likes it. I don't know that the auto dealers like it even. But that's why it's a rebate, a understanding that you probably do not want to change the formula or the actual rate. This way, you can provide the relief. That's something that I hope to be able to get through the General Assembly, and something I hope you all will be able to consider this summer, if it goes into effect July 1. The, I see several of the policy things here. I do appreciate that, in addition to the agenda, you do provide the policy statements. I think that's a better way of doing it, so that we know what council thinks, but we do not, you know, you're not making the point of emphasis. I also want to thank you for the discussion about economic development related to the Fraley and Biomedical Center. I think that that's one of the most important things that you all have specifically, not just as leaders of this community, but of Roanoke City in the middle of our wonderful valley. We have been working very hard to try to make it so that everyone understands that what is good for the county is good for the city, and what is good for the city is good for Salem, and what's good for Salem is good for Baratot. And I'm not going to name every one of our border counties, but you understand. And we've made tremendous progress over the last decade. I hope we continue to do that. I think the Fraley and Biomedical Center is one of the jewels in the entire Commonwealth. I tell folks that it is wonderful that when we work to try to get appropriations related to that, as we did a few years ago to start it, we are not asking for money to come to our community that no one else will see benefit. I love that it's in Roanoke. I'm very proud that it's in Roanoke. But I love that if someone on the eastern shore said, Senator Suterline, why did you use my tax dollars to build that building and to put that scientific material in there? I can tell them, we're optimistic that with these bright people working on it, with that great material, ideas are going to leave Roanoke, they're going to help your family members, help grandchildren of yours that haven't even been born yet. And I think that is one of the best things we can do, and I think it's important that we also find other economic benefits from it. But it's a completely legitimate function. I'm very excited about that. Regarding the policies, I won't comment on many of them. I do support the language regarding the state constitution with marriage. I don't know that I will be enthusiastic about the counterproposal. I think that what you have written here, repeal, is the correct policy. Other folks are hoping to do other things with that. I hope that we don't make, the constitution's supposed to be a governing document, it's not supposed to be a policy document. And I hope that folks with counter-policy preferences don't go down the road of trying to do what, I think they were correct in assessing previously, that that's not something that should be in the state constitution. And of course, I agree with the actual law at the statutory level, which I voted for a few years ago. But I do appreciate all of these. Something that I do think is important to address while we're here is the council election date. Obviously, I do not think that was a good thing. I do not think that moving local elections to a presidential ballot is a good thing. I think it comes off as highly politically motivated to the vast majority of folks, and this is a city that just voted about 57% for the Democratic nominee for governor, 40, little over 41% for the Republican nominee for governor. It clearly is a Democratic-leaning city in a significant way, but there's still 41% of the city that had a Republican preference for governor. They have not had a member of council elected since 2000. So it's been 21 years since a Republican's been elected to this council, and it would be one thing if we had a ward system and no one could say, well, that's the reality. You know, and you could come back at me and say, Senator Suterline, in Roanoke County where you live, all five supervisors are Republican. But you can also not draw, under the most recent presidential or gubernatorial numbers in Roanoke County, a district that shows a Democratic preference. Whereas in Roanoke City, it would not be that challenging, and there would actually be some competitive elections. And by moving the elections from May to November, it looked to a lot of people like the desire was to actually reduce the electorate to the Democratic Committee. And that is something that in a city where 41% of the people expressed Republican preference in the last governor's election, that's not a good thing. And I think it's also come out in some of the other elections in the partisanship. I think the fact that the Commonwealth's attorneys race went the way it did, I think it's very important that we be very mindful of our positions, not just, I recognize several, I'm obviously a Republican leader in the county, several of you are Democrat leaders in the city. But I think that it's important that the public feel represented by all of us. And I think that the current system of both moving the election to November and not having a ward system has a significant part of the city feeling that they are not represented by council, nor will they ever be, as long as even there's a slight advantage in the city, as long as it's citywide. A lot of folks are talking right now about the possibility that there will be House of Delegates elections next year. The reason people are thinking that is because they had to run under different lines. Well, that's happened elsewhere. But the reason why there was precedent in Virginia was because back in the early 80s, there was multi-member districts. Several of you likely remember, here in the Roanoke Valley, we had multi-member districts in which delegate Cranwell, when he was getting elected, early on, he was getting elected with another delegate. And that was the case in several places. The courts ordered the Commonwealth not to continue that practice. They said, this practice is clearly designed to dilute minority political views. Because what would happen is, instead of allowing regular elections to take place, what would happen in a single delegate district that may likely elect either a Republican, most likely a white Republican, or a Democrat, that was likely to be an African-American Democrat member, they would poll them together, and so that the most likely result was that they would be white Democrats over and over again. And they said, this is not right. This is intentionally changing the size of the electorate. You say that it's expanding, more people are getting to vote for delegate, and they get to vote for two instead of one. But the reality was, it took a slight advantage and expanded it all the way. And that's how you had super majorities in the House of Delegates through the 70s. And that's why you started seeing in the next several years, both African-American Democrats increasing in numbers and Republicans of multiple races. So that's just something that I hope you all will consider. I understand that everyone that's elected often likes the way that we were previously elected, because we think that it worked out, so folks made a good decision. But I think that it's incredibly important that the city council looks at a ward system. In a city that is this big, it is very rare for there not to have folks be able to pick someone from their section of the city to represent someone from their section of the city to represent them. And it also then creates more geographic diversity. In all the years that I've been meeting city council, there are large sections of the city I have yet to meet anyone from council from. And I think that that would change if there was a ward system. So I don't want to trespass on your time. I know we've talked about a lot of different things. I'm going to stay here for a while. I do appreciate the invitation to be with you today. As you know, I currently do not have any shared constituents with you in Roanoke City. I represent a district that's very gerrymandered and hopefully will not be gerrymandered in the future, but runs from three-quarters of the city's border all the way down to Galaks and then east to just outside Lynchburg. But like I said, what happens in Roanoke City is incredibly important for all of us. And that's why I appreciate the opportunity to be with you today, to hear your views on things we agree on and what we disagree in, and appreciate your time. Thank you.
Well, Senator Suterline, let me say, I really appreciate your candor. I truly do. As you just said, we're going to agree on some things, we're going to disagree on some things, we might have to agree to disagree sometimes. But I think it's important for us to have, you know, to put it out there on the line the way you just have it. And I really appreciate the fact that you're open enough to give us your views on that. The only one thing that I would say is that the concern about the effect of secondhand smoke is something that we hear from our citizens. So it's not just that, you know, we decided, hey, we got one step, let's take another step. But to my knowledge, the places that already are required under the Code of Virginia to designate no-smoking areas, educational facilities, healthcare facilities, department stores, grocery stores, drug stores, clothing stores, shoe stores, recreational facilities inside their buildings, none of them have been adversely affected by the fact that this is in the Code of Virginia. So I don't think it's going to hurt participation in our parks. I would hope it would help. So I just wanted to say that that's something that we are trying to represent the citizens who do elect us under whatever basis and whatever year that we are elected. So thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I attend so many of these that I want to follow the protocol of this body, but I, like I said, I represent so many other jurisdictions. Would you like me to respond or not?
Well, it's up to you. What I wanted to do was hear from the other representatives that are with us and then get comments from the other members of the committee on all of the issues that are raised. But if you have a comment you want to make at this time, that's perfectly fine.
Well, I think it might be best if each of your colleagues were able to say what they'd like to say and then maybe I respond collectively to try to make things go quicker because I know you have a lot of work before you.
All right. Mr. Mayor, did you want to make a comment?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Senator, thank you for first coming out today. And I'm disappointed that some of the other colleagues weren't able to be here, especially those that represent the city. So thank you for that. And I just want to comment, and we disagree on where we are with regards to moving the elections from May to November, which apparently we were ahead of the curve in the state because all of a sudden the state decided to make that the standard for this entire Commonwealth. But our purpose, and we've discussed this for over the years, this just didn't happen this year. We've discussed moving the elections for practically ever since I've been on council. And it's just so happened this year, we had on Georgia that felt that that was something to do. And the reason we did that is because May elections drew a very dismal, dismal, dismal number of people coming out to vote. And our position was that we needed to get more people involved in local elections. And so we wanted to do everything we can, could, to get people to come to the polls. And across the state, most May elections have dismal numbers. I mean, that's a fact. Now, we are an urban city and there are some things that we consider, but when you look at the number of people that come out, that's so important. Now, when you talk about Democrats versus Republicans, Republicans can put people up. Nobody is restricting that. As a matter of fact, I had a former colleague who served this city for years, that was a Democrat, went the other way this year in his last election. So he decided to run in another, I don't know what he ran in. It wasn't independent, he wasn't Democrat, he was, he wasn't a Republican, but he ran. But I want to emphasize that we're not dictating, the way this board, council is set up, we wanted more people, more people that are involved in the democracy and in the democratic process. That's so important. And for years, for years, this city has been governed on a local platform. And when I say that, is that we would elect people who we thought were the best people, not which party, not the R or the D, but who represented the people and what they wanted to do. And so I think for you to come in and take a shot at that and recommend to us that we should go to a ward system and what we did, I just don't think that's the appropriate approach to have on this. And so I just wanted to clarify that. We did that, and I think you've got many of your colleagues who across the state decided that going to November elections was the proper way to go. That's really why it's the law now. We didn't do that. We just went ahead, we were ahead of the curve. But, you know, we don't ever ask the question, how many African-Americans or how diverse are governing bodies in Floyd County, in Roanoke County? We don't ask that question. We accept and work with who's there. But to come in and say, well, you don't think this is diverse, I mean, you come into Roanoke and make those accusations. And I think it's, a lot of it's unfounded and I think that, you know, as long as I'm here, you know, the ward system is something that we'd have to really go back through a process, go back through a lot of stuff that we've done. And I just don't think this city is ready for a ward system. And I don't think that's a way to make this, the complexion or this council change. One good candidate is, put candidates out there that can reach people, that have ideas. And I don't, you know, there's a lot of divisiveness in the federal government, a lot of divisiveness in state government. But this city, local government, if there's anything that people focus on regarding what's best for the community and the people that's best, is local government. So I just wanted to comment on that. And also, one other thing, but I had to address that, but regarding the school board, I wanted to know about employee compensation because that's a problem. Teachers, teachers, and not only teachers, there's some other people that I see that are considered here, but teachers pay lags behind. And what is the plan for the General Assembly or the governor-elect to really improve teachers' pay? And not only teachers' pay, but all the way down the line in public service, bus drivers and others who now, it's going to be tough for them to recruit and retain those people because this is a competitive environment. And plus, as you know, public service now is not a popular thing. People, and I think we can look at COVID and it's got a lot of people changing their minds on how they're going to work or where they should work, and they're just not out there. So we need that kind of support, but especially with teachers. Nationally, we lag way behind in that. And I just think that there needs to be some support from Richmond to help bring these teacher salaries up to where they should be, or much more competitive than where they are in Virginia. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Madam Vice Mayor, did you have a comment?
The mayor addressed my concerns, my comments.
Anyone else? Senator Suterline?
I'm sorry? Heard a voice, but I couldn't, I didn't see anyone's.
I think that was our zoom guest.
All right, very good. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for your comments and the mayor's comments. Regarding, I'll try to take them in order so I remember. Regarding the smoking ordinance, I understand we have a difference of opinion. The issue that I sought to address by highlighting it though is, when council asked for one policy and Senator Edwards got that advance, and I spoke against at the time, my concern that it would be more expansive, I was repeatedly told it would not be. And now, you know, I haven't been in office that long, so I can't remember the exact year it happened, but it couldn't have happened that long ago and already there's that. And that's just what I was speaking to, is that makes it more challenging to advocate for positions for any of us, which when the folks endorse an idea and that was what was the compromise was reached and then almost immediately come back and say, no, that compromise isn't enough. That's what I sought to address with that.
Understood.
And Mr., yes, ma'am?
I have a quick question. I just want clarification. You said that in 2000 is when a Republican was elected in the city?
The last member of Roanoke City Council that was elected was 2000.
Okay. And how come they were not elected in the May elections if their May elections is what Republicans prefer, is my question.
I'm happy to address that when I get to, Mr. Chairman, I want to be respectful of your time. If everyone, does anyone else have any other comments or questions for me so I can try to consolidate my responses?
I think that's it.
That's it.
That's it. Okay. Mr. Mayor, you addressed the elections and school compensation, those were the two, and you addressed that. So regarding the elections, the reason why you would not expect a Republican to have won in the May elections is a variety of reasons. If anyone tells you why something happened, you should be, especially in politics, you should be suspect because we all know that when we run in for office, a lot of things go into it. I would tell you that you didn't have Republican candidates in some of those May elections, but more especially, there were years where there were not. So obviously, those years, that's the answer. But I think most fundamentally, when you have a citywide election, I mean, Roanoke City is, this is not typical. There are not that many places in Virginia that have their jurisdictions this big that do not have a district system. And there are jurisdictions that are larger than Roanoke City that do. And there are ones that are smaller that do. But it is not typical for this to happen. So like in Roanoke County where I live, which is just slightly smaller than the county, we have five supervisors. Now, if we were to make all five elected countywide, it would be, they would be very hard for any Democrat to ever get elected. And you would not see strong candidates probably likely run like you saw in Cave Spring this last time with Mr. Powell, who was a pretty strong candidate. It would make it very challenging. I'm not here to say you need to set up a system that elects Republicans. What I'm pointing out though is this, by having at-large elections and then moving them to the presidential November, it could have been moved to gubernatorial November, it could have been moved to the state senate November. Those, and honestly, I'm about to tell you something that I know Richmond Democrats would love if you all ran in the same times as those legislative races because you would boost turnout in the legislative races. So it's not in my political interest that there be even more Democrats on the ballot. I've always had a Democratic opponent for senate and I expect I always will. And that's great. But when you have a presidential election, we all know it's the most partisan election by far. It is way more partisan than any other election. And you know the vast majority of people are turning out to vote exclusively for president. They are not that focused on local issues. It is very hard to get attention for local issues when you have the TV stations constantly full of ads. We are all competing for political oxygen when we run. Anyone that runs Facebook ads know that if you're running Facebook ads at the same time as a campaign with a lot more money, they will outbid you. And the presidential will push you out significantly. And it's the same for TV airtime. They will buy the TV airtime far before a city council candidate's going to have the budget for it, either on broadcast or cable. By having a November presidential election, we all know that is the most partisan election. It's not close. The presidential election is the most partisan election. When you ask me about Floyd County in particular, just Floyd County was brought up, that is the longest-running Republican county in the history of Virginia. The last time they failed to vote Republican for president was 1912, and that's because Teddy Roosevelt ran as a third party and that was their selection. That is, you picked the most Republican county in Virginia at the presidential level over the last century. No one else has gone that far. They have five members of their board supervisors, three are Republicans. They run, and they have divided terms, they run in the gubernatorial year and they run in the state senate year. There is no Republican jurisdiction in Virginia that I'm aware of where there's been an effort to move the election to a presidential. That significantly increases the partisanship dramatically. That's why I bring that up. I mentioned that no Republican had won, in part to highlight, it wasn't as if Republicans were knocking, were going to, about to take over council anyways. But what we were actually having happen, much more frequently, was what the mayor talked about was folks looking for the best candidate. And we had several candidates get elected that were independents. And a lot of them, I don't think that if I were running in the city, would likely be voting for me, and they probably weren't among the 41% that voted for the governor-elect Yonkin. We know those folks, they leaned left to center and because they were representing, they would make sense, they were running in a city that had that political lean and they were representing them. But they were not products of the Democratic Committee. And there was a concerted effort by the Democratic Committee in Roanoke City to move the elections from May to November. And what was most distressing was at that same time that happened, the nomination process was reduced. We talk about how there should be the widest participation possible. I don't believe that the city Democrats have used a open state-run primary in my memory. I'm not sure it's happened this century. I believe it's always been a closed firehouse Democratic primary at one of the two high schools. And the exception to that, which, do you correct me on which council race I'm wrong?
The last council race was open. The primary was open.
In which year?
The one before, yeah. Yeah, the one before, yes.
In 2020?
No.
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 No, the 2020 was during the COVID.
COVID, right. 2018.
So in 2020, instead of having a state-run primary, a party method was selected, which is fine, that's is fine, that's the right. And then it was moved to a selection which only 100 people were even entitled to vote. That's what I'm speaking to. Actions like that make a lot of folks in the city and, and outside the city feel like it is not just, I mean, obviously I'm a Republican. I don't think there's anyone that's unaware of that. But that it was, it was very partisanshipally driven. And that's the issue by moving it to the November election. That, not just November, but the presidential. And to speak to about what happened in the rest of, why it's a state law, is because Chesapeake, this is probably more than you're gonna want to know, but Chesapeake has a Republican city council. And the Democratic senator from Chesapeake wanted Chesapeake to have a November election. And he believed that if it, Chesapeake's a swing, it's a big-time swing city. And they wanted to have the election in November and believed that if they were moved, that they would pick up Democratic seats. Okay. Well, he could not get special legislation through because if it's only one jurisdiction, it has a supermajority requirement. So during the trifecta, he made it so that it affected every Virginia locality. And to give you an idea, that was during the trifecta. And to give you an idea of how warmly it was embraced by many Democrats, you will note, several of them ducked the vote and it was the only vote that they missed that day. Because the screws were turned on them very hard. And that's what they were told to do, was to miss the vote. But we, I think we've probably talked about the, that, that issue more than I intended to. I don't know as much as you.
Let me just say.
Well, now, Mr. Mayor, let's, let's agree to disagree. I mean, I think we've all made our points, we've all.
We disagree. The only point I want to make is, it's not about the party. Look where Roanoke has gone. Roanoke is a Southern time all-American city. Look at the things that you acknowledge that are great here in this city and is moving forward. So let's pull back the party. What, where is this city? And I think this city has done some tremendous things, is doing some tremendous things. And, and I think that's what citizens look at, the progressiveness of our city and what we're doing to make, to enhance the quality of life, our, our schools, which right now we had a tremendous graduation rate here. Those kinds of things are, well, we're not caught up in the D or the R. And it looks like a lot of people are. But basically we're saying, let's make this city the best city, not only in the Commonwealth, but in the country. I think we've gone a long way with that, to do that, to make that happen. And so I just, you know, just to keep pounding this on Democrats versus Republicans, let's make it a good city, a city that's doing great things in the community, a city that's working together with the localities. Salem and Roanoke County were coming together. We've done some things that, that, that I think, uh, I, makes us a strong city and community and one of the strongest in the Commonwealth. Let's look at that. And that, so that's my focus, is to continue to do that and to continue to work together. Many things, we've got the legislators, which we've been, have come together to make sure that we're recognized. So I just want to say that, I, 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 I thank you for your response. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. But I'm just saying, Roanoke is a progressive city that's doing some tremendous things, that's been recognized.
Let's move on with this.
I have a question, or related to this. I have a question on related to the elections.
Let's move on, Councilman Sanchez, John. Councilwoman Sanchez, so let's move on, please.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Appreciate your patience, Mr. DiLorenzo and, and Ms. Franklin. And I'll recognize our representative from Senator Edwards' office.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Member of the City Council, Councilman Best Pitch. My apologies that Senator Edwards couldn't be here this morning. He had to be with a client. When I say that out loud, it's usually summons him to appear behind me. So if he does, I will yield my time. But, uh, so to begin with, the city's legislative priorities, we are, as you have correctly noted, drafting a number of them. I thank, uh, Willie and Delegate Russell's office for carrying as much of the city's program as they are. We do have a bill limit in the senate, so we're having to be strategic about what we choose to introduce. Some of those conversations are still ongoing. We have some decisions still to make. I will say that the land bank bill, which I know is very important, and we've had some interest for some time, we have submitted that for drafting as well. So that's an update to make here. Some of the others, the Museum of Transportation, we've had a number of conversations with Delegate Fitzpatrick and had been having conversations with some members of the current administration about how best to proceed with that, as you mentioned, Councilman Best Pitch, whether it's to be a bill or a budget amendment. That's sort of still to be determined, how best to support the Museum of Transportation. We're gonna keep looking at that and do what we can. Regarding, uh, let me see. Um, and, yeah, Museum of Transportation. And regarding the smoking in parks, I think that's also one that we're going to introduce. And, that's right, that's the other one I wanted to say. The smoke alarms in certain buildings is one that we are going to introduce. I, I think that based on my experience in the senate, I think that that's one that might have to be tweaked a little bit. I know that often with residential landlords, the senate tends to want to say, uh, they tend want to want to regulate below four units. And I think that this says, you know, for, for any rental unit. So that, that's just something I would anticipate maybe being brought up at some point in the process. But beyond that, we are certainly going to advocate to pass as much of this as we can. And whatever Delegate Russell is able to get out of the house, we will do our best to carry it through the senate. Senator Edwards also sits on the Senate Finance Committee, as many of you know, and advocating for our region through the budget is one of our top priorities. We have a number of projects going on in the city currently, in particular the Roanoke Higher Education Center, a couple of exciting things that'll be new in the budget this year. Also, really one of our biggest priorities for the last several years and continuing forward has been making sure that some of the big-ticket items in the budget that affect this region, particularly the I-81 money and Amtrak expansion, that those are, if anything, sped up. We really want to see that stuff done ahead of schedule, not just on the schedule that it has been on. So we're gonna continue to push for that through the budget, making sure that all of that funding stays in place and that, if anything, things are done ahead of schedule. Because as we know, transportation projects are often lengthy and folks want them done. So that's something that we're gonna keep banging the table for. And beyond that, as far as, as far as the May elections, as somebody who did speak in favor of moving them to November, I just want to say that I think that that's been a great thing. I think that it has been from my perspective, that as y'all said, it's, it's about increasing turnout. I think if you ask the average American when, when they vote, they'll just say November. I think most folks don't even know that there is a May election. I think that, I, I would counter Senator Suterline and suggest that the most partisan election is a May election, because those are the ones that only the committees vote in. So that's something that we would like to see that charter change get done. And beyond that, as I said, we still have some time to make some decisions about what bills we're gonna carry, put together budget amendments. And if y'all have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Well, I understand that Senator Edwards has also spoken with Annette Lewis at TAP. TAP is our partner on the land bank activities. And so I really appreciate him taking the time to discuss that, that issue with her as well. Mr. Crowe?
Thank you, Patrick. I did have just a couple of quick questions. And one is, I know that last year there was a, a cap on how many bills legislators could introduce. Is that the same case this year?
Yes, Councilman, Chairman Best Pitch. Last year, I believe both the House and Senate had bill limits. This year, I believe only the Senate is going to have a bill limit. I believe it is going to be 25 bills introduced, which is higher than they were last year. Obviously, I think everyone's anticipating that the environment will be a little freer and easier to work in with COVID being hopefully a thing of the past by the time we get to January. Fingers crossed.
And the second question had to do with hoped-for introduction of legislation or sponsorship on the AED tax credit. I know that in, in a lot of the work that's been done locally through the Compress and Shock Foundation, that we want to see this be a statewide effort, but we're looking for some legislative champions of this. So I'd really encourage you and Delegate Russell, then Senator Suterline, to, to consider that as part of your work.
Yeah, we, uh, thank you for that. And we have looked at that. I discussed this with Senator Edwards recently and just sort of ways to get these AEDs out into the community. Like you said, they save lives if there are ways that we can get them to where they will be used. We should always be looking at that. So that is a great idea that we're interested in continuing to work on.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands at this time, so I will ask Ms. Franklin from Delegate Russell's office. Thank you for being with us, Lilly.
No problem. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having us here this morning. So for those of you I haven't met, which I think I've met most of you all, my name's Lilly. I'm with Delegate Russell's office. I'm his chief of staff. I've been with him for almost five years now. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have about his policies or the office or just in general, on the General Assembly. So he had a specific message he wanted me to share with you all. So he is sorry that he couldn't be here this, this morning as he looks forward to this event every year. He's very thankful that he was able to be re-elected this year in the area that he grew up in. This past year, he's been working with the city officials, with you all, on potential legislation around land banks. And he's excited about the agenda that you all have put together and happy to work with you on some of the other pieces that we've been drafting. And then he also wanted to thank the school board for the work that they've done this past year. I mean, just in general, local government, school boards have had a really tough time. And I've been really impressed with the work that you all have done to get through this past pandemic year. And then lastly, he is available for you to talk to him anytime. I can give you his personal number afterwards if you do not already have that. As far as the House, I think most of you know that things are kind of up in the air a little bit with the transfer of power. We imagine that Sam's gonna stay on most of the same committees, but that could change. So we have had to change up a little bit of our legislative agenda and priorities. We imagine that we'll have unlimited bills to submit, but again, all of this could change. It could be as late as next month before we know a lot of this information. So with that, do you all have any questions?
I don't see any. So thank you again, and please give our best to Delegate Russell. I'm going to, at this time, just ask each member, I'll come right down the line from the far end of the desk, and then our two school board members who are also serving on the other state committee. And finally, I'll ask Ms. Bateman with the Banner Strategies if she has any comments she'd like to make. So if we could start down with Councilmember Sanchez Jones, if you have any questions or comments at this time.
Counselor.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
She's out, she's out.
Oh. She's stepped away?
Yeah, she stepped away.
Okay. So, Mr. Jeffrey?
No comment this time.
Mr. Mayor?
Just through all of this, I want to make sure, especially for our legislators, that, and you very may mention this last week at the regional luncheon, I don't want to forget House Bill 599 in terms of police. We need help with police officers. That's so important. And as I said then, this is not a Roanoke issue, this is societal issue. And then we've got to get more help. And this affects our school systems also in terms of that. And I want to make sure that stays up top of the list, or at least right around there because it's so important and it's critical, given where we are. And, and what I'm afraid that I see happening around this country in terms of gun violence, and it's like it's creeping its way back, back into our schools. And so we need that support from police officers, and not only here, we recruit and retain police officers. And as I said, there's a challenge for, a challenge for people. The challenge is, we've got to make sure that, that we can reach out and make sure we protect our citizens, all of them. And that's so important. So keep that in mind as the General Assembly comes together. And, and, well, you know what House Bill 599 says, we gotta, we gotta work on that in all the localities. And I was, I really appreciated the meeting last week and talking with y'all last week. And it was interesting that many of the localities there had similar issues, not as in depth, but they had similar issues with regards to public safety and police officers. People are leaving jobs. They're leaving police. Police officers aren't interested, people aren't interested in being police officers anymore. That's a concern. So please keep that in mind as you talk about that, public safety, in this year's General Assembly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I would, first of all, just like to thank our chair, our school board, Ms. Smith, and, and vice chair, Dr. Jamison, and Superintendent White and her staff for being here. And a special thank you to Senator Suterline for coming, coming in to, to speak with us today and, and Lilly from Sam's office, and also Patrick from Senator Edwards' office, because they weren't here, and I'm glad you all were able to be here. The only thing that got lost kind of in the crossfire was the teacher raises. I hope that, that everybody will, you, you raising your hand, Senator Suterline?
Yes, just.
I, I just saw your hand go up.
I, I plan to address that, but I, I was asked to, to move on.
Okay.
I don't know if you'd like.
No, I was just making a comment.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that.
No, I just wanted to make sure that that, hopefully that that will be addressed because we certainly need raises for our teachers.
Yeah, I apologize, Senator, I did not realize.
That was my last question.
Yes, thank you. And, and no matter what, this will be my last time at the podium today.
No matter what.
Yes, that is a, a top priority. Governor-elect Youngkin promised multiple times that this budget that he signs will be, which will likely be sometime in April, is when we'll get to that point where it gets to his desk for final signature. But it will be the largest Commonwealth investment in, in schools, the largest K-12 budget in the history of the Commonwealth. Regarding teacher pay, I can't speak, when I was asked previously what the governor-elect would do, I can't say exactly what he'll do. But what I will be encouraging all my colleagues is the same as I have before. You heard me talk about how much I love the benefits that we get from, I also love IAs. My, my mother is one in Bristol. But I, I, I think that we get such great value out of that. That, that's one of the things we'll be doing. Compensation for those folks who do such important work will still, it'll still be a great value, I believe, like I said. But when you have the Commonwealth step up and remove this, hopefully at least that part of the Support Services cap, that would then relieve local tension for the entire school budget. So one, it would make it easier for compensation across, across the board and how it's chosen to be done. I also believe there will be a significant pay raise advocated, I mean, I don't believe, I know I will be advocating for one, and I'm optimistic that it will be realized. I think that's something that our entire delegation shares support for, and I think that's something the governor-elect would like to do specifically. So the two things is, one, just outright raise, that's, that's the first half of the plan as I see it. And the other would be by providing Support Services cap relief so that our localities can do that. I know I've got two superintendent, you know, two very recent superintendents behind me that, when they're working with their school board over budgets, the Support Services cap makes it a lot harder to do things that you'd want to do, like provide compensation for everyone. So thank you again for your time, and I will be on education health again this year unless something changes. And I always welcome thoughts on everything, but especially on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Crowe?
Thanks. Just a couple remarks. Thank you all for your presence here today. And I, I'm really excited about where we are as a region and the growth we're experiencing and the strong points of every locality of our region. And I think the more we can celebrate those things and make sure that our policies and our relationships with each other strengthen those, the better off we'll all be. So thank you for that. I'm glad to hear about support of the repeal regarding the marriage amendment. I think that's the right thing to do, and I'm glad that there's bipartisan support regarding that. I also want to thank the General Assembly for the funding that was made possible through legislation regarding the youth and gang violence community assessment that Roanoke and other, seven other, six other localities are currently undergoing. We're about to finish up that assessment, and we're grateful for that support that made the assessment possible, not only through legislation, but also through funding. And so I would just reiterate that. And so I would just reiterate that the importance of that for our community and how we're addressing gun violence and reducing it through prevention and intervention and response, but to the degree that the General Assembly can continue to provide funding and legislative support for those initiatives, that's going to be really critical. This is not something we can end or reduce in a year. It's a long-term effort and so the long-term support from the General Assembly is really critical. So thank you all for your support of that.
Thank you. Patrick, did you have another comment you want to make? I'll chair the meeting, thank you.
Sorry, real quickly, since y'all brought it up, Senator Edwards would definitely have wanted me to say support for the state police, adequate funding for the state police and the Capitol Police has been a priority of his for many years. For the last two years at least, we've been bringing a bill to try and address the state police's pay compression and retention issues. We're continuing to look at ways to support them and the Capitol Police who do such a great job of securing the Capitol and taking care of us when we're in Richmond. And I'll add that locally, law enforcement, obviously as the mayor said, is certainly a priority for us as well.
Well, thank you. Just to note, you know, that, that 599 was essentially a, a promise that the General Assembly made 40 years ago and have never kept it, never kept it. Sheriff's deputies, I understand, they get funding from the, from the comp board. State police, correctional officers, forget that. But there is a section in the Code of Virginia that says what is supposed to happen for local police. And to completely override that through the budget amendments year after year after year after year has left us across the Commonwealth, millions of dollars behind, millions. So I just hope that that can get a little bit more attention as it, as it so richly deserves. Ms. Smith.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you to the council and thank you to Senator Suterline and representatives from Senator Edwards and Russell's offices. We appreciate the opportunity. We continue to appreciate the support of the council and our state legislators in funding and support for our Roanoke City Public Schools. As we are in this period of the great resignation, we are desperately in need of additional funding, state funding, to attract and retain top teachers and staff to ensure that our students receive the quality education that they need and deserve. So we look forward to this budget, which we believe we here is going to be, provide that increased funding and we are hopeful because our children deserve nothing less than that. And we also want to just share our support for House Bill 599. We desperately need the support that our sheriffs and our police officers provide to ensure that our students have a safe environment in which to learn. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, Dr. Jamison.
No, thank you, but thank you for having us.
Thank you. Ms. Bateman, are you with us? There you are.
Hi there, I am. Good morning, everyone.
Oh, I see Mr. Jordan has also joined us.
My pleasure to be with you this morning and on behalf of Adana Strategies, really looking forward to continuing to work with the city and the city's delegation, regional and regional delegation on your issues of concern. I'm going to turn it over to Adana Strategies managing partner, my colleague, Ron Jordan.
Ron, I didn't realize you had joined us as well. Good to see you.
Good to see you, Mr. Chairman, and, and to you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple of things and we'll get you out of here by 11:00, believe me. The, the, as you know, it's a 60-day session. The state financially is looking at a $3 billion year-end balance for the current biennium and an estimated $10 billion in revenue growth over the next biennium, so a total of about $13 billion, which is unprecedented. There are a lot of reasons for that, we're not going to get into it here, but suffice it to say, there, there's a fair amount of money out there. Most of the items in your packet are budget-related this year in terms of your ask and while we have Senator Edwards on the Senate Finance and Appropriations Committee, we also have relied in the past, and he's been very supportive of some city stuff, in Delegate Austin. Delegate Austin's profile with the Senate, with the House turning, returning to Republican control this year, his profile in the House Appropriations Committee is expected to be elevated even further. He was a budget conferee last year and frankly, wouldn't be surprised if he wound up as Vice Chair of Appropriations this year. We've been working, I know we've been talking to your economic development folks about the Innovation Quarter project and we'll be working with a, a number of folks on that. The museum, similarly on, on the House side, things that have a valley-wide impact in particular are appealing to folks who may not be totally on the city delegation. The clerks issue is, you all know a little bit more on that. As you know, the Roanoke Circuit Clerk is one of the few clerks left in the state who's actually still in the fee system. What that means is the clerk's office operates solely on the fees that they collect, on the court fees that they collect. Just about every other circuit clerk in the state, the fees are returned to the state and in return, they get a budget, budgeted amount from the state compensation board. What happens is the fees start to, no, start to, don't keep up with the growth in the office and therefore insufficient to support the needs of the office and that's when many of them have changed. There are a few left, like I said, just a couple left on the fee system. We'll be working, we're already talking with the state compensation board, will address that also through a budget amendment this year. On education is, on the education side, this morning at West Side, the governor will announce a 5% pay increase, he's proposing a 5% pay increase in each year of the new biennium. Now, the, the state money is good, but as anyone who deals in public education knows, it's the match. A 5% in each year is a, is a pretty big hit in terms of required local match. That's going to be, that, that will be the challenge on, on your end and that'll be a big part of the discussion as, as the proposal moves forward, regardless of who's proposing the raise, whether it's Governor Northam or Governor-elect Youngkin, is where we're going to come up with the local match. Finally, and, and so it lends itself to the, to the argument that if you free up money by eliminating or reducing the support cap, then, then you free up local money to use to match for salaries. As, as some of you know, we do a fair amount of public school-related work and we came up with a method to start peeling back the support cap staff, support staff cap last year. We worked closely with a small group of legislative liaisons that are very active on the policy front and we're going to be revisiting that this year along with some others. And with that, Mr. Chairman, we've, we've been cranking. As Lilly and Luke can attest, they've been in touch with LAR almost daily on drafting requests and such and as soon as the budget is released on December 16th by Governor Northam, we will be drafting budget amendments and for them to submit.
Well, let me just quickly thank you and all of your team at Adana, Ron, for all of the support and information you've provided to us on a regular basis and I look forward to working with all of you through this next upcoming General Assembly session. And with that, I just want to recognize Luke Pretty from Senator Edwards' office who's also joined us. Thank you. I understand you had a previous appointment, but you managed to slip over here and we appreciate that very much and all that you do to, to work with us. Thank you. And that's it. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Mayor, that concludes our legislative meeting this morning.
All right, thank you, Chairman Best Pitch. All right, council will stand in recess for a closed meeting and will reconvene at 2:00 PM for our evening session. Thank you.